Yeah?
Okay. Good evening. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of Flugerville City Council November 12th at 7:00 PM. If you would please stand for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. You may be seated. All right. Before we get on to public comment, I would like to take a moment to recognize an individual on the city council who has served for going on nine years and is terming out, and this is his final regular council meeting, Councilmember Doug Weiss, who has been mayor pro temp for two years in the past and has served on the PCDC board for 11 years, making significant contributions to the city of Flugerville. So on behalf of the entire city council and community, Doug, thank you very much for your efforts and your support of Flugerville across the last years. Thank you very much. And we have something for you. All right. Public comment. In accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment that is made on an item that is not on the published final agenda will only be heard by city council. No formal action, discussion, deliberation, or comment will be made by the city council. Each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes. I have Becky Halpin. Yeah, yes ma'am.
That was quick. Hi, I'm Becky Halpin. I'd like to speak tonight on the subject of Old Town Park, a park in Old Town that's small, is being upgraded to a regional park. The people that live around the park do not want the park. There's no parking. There's no sidewalks along the streets that lead to the park where you would park your car to go there. But laying all that aside, that's not really what I want to talk about, about the park. I want to talk about the cost of the park and how it fits into where we are today. The park, as I understand it, costs a million dollars to design, looking toward the future, of course, will cost $5 million to construct and already has a $350,000 upgrade to the very beautiful water tower that's there. So Flugerville, right now, as I understand it, is investing in a water treatment plant, a wastewater treatment plant, a new downtown, a new sea hall, all of that looking toward the future, but when we get done with it, we're going to be over $5 billion in debt as a city. We are, or we're going to be in big debt, whatever you think. It's a lot of money right now for us. I know my wastewater bill is projected to be over $1,200 in five years, just as a base rate. That's a lot of money every month. We live on social security and teacher retirement. All of us are going into a new period where we're struggling to pay our bills. We, our homeowner insurance has gone up 30% in two years. Our car insurance has gone up 37% in two years. I know other people said it's gone up the same. Utilities are going up. I live in Encore, they're asking for a 13% price increase. Atmos is going up. Everything is going up. So as a city, I think, asking for a very expensive regional park in a neighborhood where it really doesn't fit and the neighborhood really doesn't even want it right now, I'm asking you, if you would please not put that park in your budgets or your bond proposals anytime going forward, and come back to the neighborhood and talk to them about that park. I think the future is important and parks are important. But looking to the future, for our family, we wanted to get an electric car that we could plug things into when there was a power outage. You know, why have a car with a big battery sitting out there that you can't use when your power's out? And I would have loved to have a Ford Lightning. You can plug that thing into your house and you can power the whole thing for days. But we couldn't afford it. We bought a used IONIQ that you can plug a refrigerator into and some heaters and stuff. And I would like to see the city kind of follow the same thing. Let's, let's pay for what we can afford. Let's don't be buying things that we shouldn't be paying for these days.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Lourdes Zuniga.
Good evening. My name is Lourdes Zuniga, and I really appreciate you taking the time to listen to my invitation. I run and I'm the founder of an organization, a nonprofit, Financial Health Pathways, and we've run successfully for the past five years, a diversion slash community service program that addresses Class C misdemeanors and other minor offenses. We received recently funding from a very big organization to expand that successful program, and we would like to invite the Municipal Court in Flugerville to be a part of the expansion of this program. Just to say a couple of things about this initiative. We have pretty much every judge, justice of the peace in Dallas, Kennedy County, Frio County, to date, we have dismissed almost 3,000 cases and we're well on track to dismiss a million dollars in fines and fees from communities that really are struggling to pay their bills. The program addresses poverty, and particularly because the usage of community service and diversion programs in Texas is very underutilized, is probably 0.68, so it's less than 1% of cases that come through the court that are being addressed through those alternatives to fines and fees. I'm happy to submit any data that you guys would like to see, but we definitely see a need for collaboration and partnership with organizations like mine to, rather than using punitive measures to get people to do the right thing, that we can use behavioral health and actually change the perception of people that think that some of these misdemeanors can just be wiped off with a ticket. In the long term, the consequences are crucial because people cannot have a license to get employment, cannot vote, cannot rent an apartment, and in a lot of cases, cannot even get fair employment because they have a background. Our program addresses all that, and we receive an investment from Arnold Ventures in Washington, DC. This program is highlighted as a best practice in the court system and has won several awards for its innovative way to address fines and fees, which now is a national conversation. So the invitation is there. I hope that the Municipal Court in Flugerville, at your advice, can join this movement, and I really thank you for the time that you took to listen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Arash Sabari?
Hello, all. My name is Arash Sabari. I'm a Flugerville resident, a building owner, and I own Spinners and Sip and Smash Social, two venues that serve the Flugerville community with leagues, family events, and local jobs. We've invested over $1 million into Sip and Smash alone. I'm here about Sip and Smash Social, attended at 19903 FM 685. We followed staff directions step by step to permit and pass inspections. Staff allowed us to move through the process. We passed all health and safety and we opened. After that, we were sent back to planning and told prepare for a full site plan for the entire multi-tenant property, even though we only lease a portion. From our side, the bar has kept shifting what was required and how it had to be documented and how temporary fees would be applied. That changed while we were actively complying. To meet the new requirements, we had to fire our engineer and hire a new firm and pay the expedited, expedited work to move faster. The partial plan is submitted at this point, and we're not camping on a temporary certificate. We're delivering real work. Here's the problem. While we do exactly what the city has asked us to do, our TCO fees have doubled each month. At one meeting, we were told that the fees wouldn't double, but our sequence has gone from 100 to 250 to 500 to 1,000, and now 1,000, and next month will be 4,000. Planning is agreed to issue a new TCO, but only at the escalated rate, and even after we submit the full site plan, the doubling continues during city review and during the corrections we must perform to reach a permanent CO. This is unattainable. For a small tenant paying rent, payroll, utilities, and now site-wide engineering on a property we don't own, the structure becomes a hardship. It doesn't reflect noncompliance, it reflects the timing cost of compliance, the work, for the work the city has required after we have already passed building, health, and safety. I understand the intent of the doubling policy. No one should indefinitely live on a TCO without progress, but our case, this policy punishes good faith and risks pushing out a local operator who is investing heavily into Flugerville. My request is to issue and confirm our TCO, cap our TCO renewals at 500 during the site plan review window, and require corrections from submission through acceptance up to a reasonable time limit such as 120 or 180 days. This keeps accountability and momentum. There's a clear, there is a clear endpoint without allowing the fee itself to be what closes a community venue mid-compliance. As a resident, building owner, and someone who has invested heavily into Flugerville, I want to finish this the right way and continue serving the families of Flugerville.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marie Lozano?
She doesn't want to talk.
Huh?
She doesn't want to talk.
Okay, is that 6A?
Yes.
Okay. That wasn't on here. That's fine. Okay. I have several requests, but they are for an item that's on the agenda, so I'll reserve those for that agenda item. Is there anybody else here wishing to make public comment? Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to 4A is the presentation by the Texas Workforce Commission regarding We Hire Vets designation.
Good evening, Mayor Gonzalez, city council members, and community members. My name is Casey Wade with the Texas Veterans Leadership Program, a program created by the Texas Workforce Commission to assist veterans returning into civilian life here in Texas. I'm a retired veteran of the US Army, having served 14 years on active duty and with the Texas Army National Guard for an additional 11 years. It is my honor to be here tonight representing the Texas Workforce Commission's We Hire Vets Employer Recognition Program. This program acknowledges employers across our state who go above and beyond in supporting those who have served our country. To qualify, an employer must have at least 10% of its workforce made up of veterans in the state of Texas. Tonight, we are proud to recognize the city of Flugerville as one of those employers. By having 14% of its workforce as veterans, the city of Flugerville is not only providing jobs, but embracing the leadership, integrity, dedication, and dedication that veterans bring into the workplace. These qualities strengthen any organization, and in this case, they directly strengthen the services that the city of Flugerville provides to its citizens. You are one of 33 county and municipalities that have been recognized for this achievement this year. At this time, I would also like to recognize veterans who are present with us this evening. Whether you are current employees, community members, or family of service members, please raise your hands. Your service is the foundation of why programs like We Hire Vets exists, and we are grateful. On behalf of the Texas Workforce Commission, the Texas Veterans Commission, and the Texas Veterans Leadership Program, it is my privilege to present this recognition to the city of Flugerville. You have set an example for other municipalities by demonstrating that hiring veterans is just not the right thing to do, but the smart thing to do. Thank you for your leadership, your commitment to our veterans, and your ongoing service to the community. Congratulations, city of Flugerville, on being a We Hire Vets employer.
Casey, thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, that was quite appropriate, right after Veterans Day. We appreciate our veterans. Our next item is, oh, wait a minute. Trista? Our consent agenda. Anybody wishing to pull items?
5B and 5G.
5B and 5C. Oh, and 5F.
Five what?
F. Fauxstrut.
Okay. All right, Trista.
Okay. I have items 5B, 5C, 5E, 5F, and 5G pulled from the consent agenda. All remaining items may be acted upon in a single motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Wait a minute. I don't have my little thing set up here.
You may need to just refresh it.
There it is. Which button?
I don't want to screw it up.
Okay.
Oh, that one. Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Mayor Pro Temp?
Um, I don't have anything to do yet. There it is.
All right. Motion carried. Thank you. Our next item is 6A, discuss and consider action to approve the Flugerville Community Development Corporation Community Engagement Grant not to exceed $300,000 for the purpose of reimbursing Flugerville area youth baseball and softball for essential repairs and upgrades to improve the Flugerville ASD youth baseball and softball fields located at 701 Emmanuel Road and authorizing PCDC Executive Director to execute the same.
Good evening, council members. At our previous board, previous council meeting, rather, the item was rescheduled to this meeting in need for requested letter of good standing. Following that, we did receive a letter of good standing. We had some additional comments by one of our council members requesting some additional information from the PAYBAS. Those items were a copy of the 990 tax returns for 83123 and 83124, and to confirm that they were filed with the IRS, provide pictures of the fencing, questions about the new fields at 1849, also mentioned, requested some financial statements for August 31st, 2025, and the budget for August 31st, 2026, and then also just some questions as it relates to the Northeast Metro Park in, here in Flugerville. And so the response was provided with the, with the, with those documentations. However, there was some documentation that was, was missing, and those were the tax returns of 1820, 83123 was not attached. However, per the accountant, that was provided. Then there was a question about the balance sheet for 824, for 83124. And so the information that they've provided, we forwarded to the councilwoman based off of her inquiries that she had, and at this point, I will either yield to the council or bring up the Ms. Doctor to speak to this project.
I had questions first with the manager, Breland. Can you provide us information about the 1849 park and the new phase and our plans for providing baseball and softball fields for the community?
Ooh, I will do my best. Shane, we will be opening up some new fields at 1849 Phase 2. They are well underway and looking really great. Shane, you're going to have to keep me from lying about how many softball, how many baseball.
Good evening. Just not expecting to speak. We have three fields coming in, two baseball, one softball. Substantial completion will be right around the end of the year, and I mean right around the end of the year, probably December 28th, something like that. Substantial completion normally means we're about 90, 95, 90 to 95%. We have some punch out that we'd have to do. We anticipate those fields being fully open for use by the time their spring season starts, middle of February. That's about the time we would open them anyways because we, we go into our maintenance period from Thanksgiving to Valentine's. Now, the first season we open, we will be at a reduced play rate on those fields, about 15 hours, because it's new sod, and it takes a little time for it to establish, and kids beat the heck out of fields. And so, just like at 1849 and 2018, when y'all first opened that, we had 12 to 15 hours a week, the first season will be at 12 and 15 hours a week. So they would definitely need to supplement at Northeast Metro or their current seven fields potentially just to get some sort of play-in between practice and games. They wouldn't be able to use it 100%. And even after that, we'll put them on the allocation system, and we'll do it just like we allocate football and soccer. They'll have every opportunity to be allocated to PABAS and anybody else based off y'all's matrix, that is recreational play, Flugerville residents at the highest priority. Those three fields will be open to the matrix allocation process.
Can you give me some historical context about why we built these fields and who we intended to use them?
Sure. Yeah, so there was a feasibility study before my time, 2013, 2014, stating that Flugerville needed some, a sports complex for its growing population. Ultimately, the Flugger Track that is now 1849 Park was identified, purchased, and obviously in phases after the conceptual design. Soccer and football came first. There were no baseball or softball fields in the first round. That conceptual plan calls for six fields. We were only able to get three because unfortunately, that conceptual plan didn't take into account all the elevation issues that we've had, that we had to deck these fields in a certain way. So a flatter portion of that park, or if that park would have been flatter there, we may be unable to get more fields in. But originally, through the feasibility study in 2013, 2014, said that this community would need six additional fields to the fields yet at Northeast Metro. Northeast Metro, just like we prioritize Flugerville residents, Northeast Metro prioritizes county residents, so main residence and everyone else equals, even though Northeast Metro's in our city limits, Flugerville isn't given any type of priority. And so there was a need for additional, those six. We weren't able to get all that in our first round of funding. We do have conceptual for three more fields, another baseball, another softball, and a T-ball field, but that right now is unfunded.
So you said we'll have two coming up pretty soon, and the third one in the future, near future.
Three fields, uh, yeah. One, two baseball and one softball.
Just one softball. And currently, remind me, how many diamonds does the PABAS use?
They have seven.
They use seven?
They have three baseball, two softball, and two T-ball, or something like that?
One T-ball.
One T-ball.
Two softball and four baseball.
Four baseball.
Okay. So you use seven. Okay. All right.
Northeast Metro has eight. Those are all baseball fields. They're all larger baseball fields. They're used for tournament play in the weekends and adult play, and then the youth use them during the week. One day's for prep, one day's for maintenance, three or four days just for the community during the week.
And can you remind us the general cost that we're investing in those baseball and softball fields in this phase?
Yeah, 10 million. Right around $10 million.
Is that for the three fields?
For the three fields and all the engineering that was required to get those three fields in at that location.
So 300,000's a bargain. So you indicated that there would be reduced usage the first year because of...
Establishing the grass. Yes.
Is that, would that go on to the second year, or would there be full usage the second year?
So our 1849 rollout was 12 to 15 hours the first season, then it jumped up to 18 to 20. We're at 30 hours now. Our soccer fields get about 30 hours of play a week. So I think it would bear the reason that it would be a slow rollout, but we'll evaluate those, the sod growth in the summer to let them know in the allocation if we're able to give them 15 to 18, or if we're able to go to 2025. But it probably won't reach what we're at now for 30 for a couple of years. It does take sod some time to establish.
So the first year, it would be equivalent to a little bit more than, than one field?
Yeah, I'd imagine you'd be able to play games out there or practices out there, but you probably couldn't do both.
Couldn't do both.
Yeah.
And then the second year be equivalent to two fields?
We're getting there. Yeah. Getting closer to that.
Okay. Just trying to figure out how the growth is going to go in the usage.
The first time we did this sod, we had Parks and Rec staff managing it. We now have R3 managing it, same guys that do the Dell Diamond, so they may be able to limp that along better than we were able to in 2018, 2019, but sod takes what it takes to establish. Yeah, takes a little time.
So are there other organizations that are going to use this, these fields when they open?
For this spring season, we're only working with PABAS because we only have so many hours a week, and we know them to be the only, the only organization inside of Flugerville city limits. Soon as that allocation, everyone will go through that matrix. Soon as that allocation, everyone will go through that matrix process. Whoever has the most recreational, Flugerville residents will get the highest priority of the matrix.
But Shane, we know how this works. That, okay, so PABUS will get it from the beginning, but then, once people realize what we have over here, sure, all of a sudden, these organizations will be popping up in Flugerville and saying, hey, listen, we represent Flugerville families, you know, we've got this percentage and, you know, we're gonna have everyone out there fighting for that. So, I mean, it's, it's one thing to say, I mean, and, and I really do appreciate you saying about the lessons learned from, um, prior with eighteen forty-nine. It's one thing to say that, hey, listen, this is what we're gonna do, they're gonna have their space. But even now, for somebody who's come over from, well, I mean, from, from a select side to working in Pasel now, Pasel's begging for space as well, too, as well, what they're trying to do.
Yeah, Pasel's always scored highest in our evaluation, in our matrix, but there are definitely other associations to get. Now, we have three pods, six fields, plus football, plus, so we have more to allocate on the soccer, football side. So that's where Pasel is able to, to play nice with Cap City and some of those other sports associations. With only three fields, it'll probably be one organization, could be two. We'll just have to look at who applies and how they score in the matrix.
It'll be a tough, will be tough for allocation.
Any other questions?
Well, I, I did have a concern about the, the taxes. When I requested information and
No, taxes.
Yeah, so there's a, there is a, you know, IRS requirement that you file tax returns every year. And if you don't do it for three years in a row, that's when you have a revocation status and that has happened twice before. And so, when, you know, when I looked at the, the details, the last two years had not been filed and August thirty-one twenty, twenty-five would be the third year. So, um, and then it seems like they, they weren't, it was confirmed that they weren't filed and the cop, the full copies haven't been provided. So I'm just concerned about IRS compliance and that we need to have a certain standard if we're gonna be using taxpayer money, that the organizations need to be in compliance with all of the laws. My other concern is that when I looked at the pictures of the fences, um, I, I just personally didn't see what the reason to spend three hundred, or two hundred and ninety thousand dollars on replacing the fences. Um, you know, maybe there's an opportunity for repair. Um, and then my concern is that we built these new fields for ten million dollars that are gonna open up next month and there's no one else planning on using them yet. So I, I would like for us to use the ten million dollar park assets that we just invested in.
So I, I guess my question, well, let's, let's start with your question first and I can ask my question. So, um, Councilmember Ryan brought up the fact regarding the tax situation. I know you'd send us some other documents. Can, can you elaborate more for us about what's going on?
Yeah, so I have the letter from IRS stating that we are in good standing. I know at the last meeting, it said that we, uh, it was brought up that we were not in good standing. We are in good standing according to this letter that was dated, uh, November seventh of twenty twenty-five. Our fiscal year ends in August, so we have five months and fifteen days after our fiscal year ends to then file the taxes. So our taxes, although for twenty twenty-five will be filed, uh, we have until January to file them for twenty twenty-six, but that's not going to be the case. They are being worked on right now. If not by the end of the next week, they will be filed for twenty twenty-five fiscal year. Um, we are a nonprofit and we are volunteer-run organization. And unfortunately with that, you do have those people that, it's kind of like, I don't wanna say a revolving door, but you have people that are in and out. We have our treasurer who's, uh, will be done December first, and we have a new treasurer who's coming on, who is very excited for this part actually, which is kind of nice to see somebody excited for it. I, I can't, I can't speak for what happened before. I can't speak for what happened in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. I wasn't even there. Um, and I, I can only take account of what we're doing now. And we rectified that situation. The accountant sent us proof that the IRS accepted our returns for the two previous years. It says on there that your, um, that your file has been received. One was dated, I believe, the fifth and one was the ninth or the seventh, I don't really remember. I do have that. So I can only, that's all I can speak on, on that.
Okay.
Well, there has been a little bit going on in the federal government lately.
A little bit.
Um, I, regarding the fencing?
Yes.
So, um, she brought up the fact that she felt like that your, your current fencing is, would say adequate, so.
I, I could only go what I saw with the pictures.
Yeah, I mean, at any time the fields are open, you're welcome to go out and look at those. But we have had three different fencing companies come out to give us quotes and all three of them, and I'm not exaggerating when I say that they were appalled at the fencing. Um, there's separated, uh, like welding pieces that are coming off. There's bulges in the fencing. There's fencing that's coming up from the ground. And that just comes down to a safety sandpoint of the kids when they're running out to the outfield and their shoe gets stuck underneath the fence. I mean, that's, it can happen. I think that that kind of comes down to two, um, how well-versed, how many, how many baseball fields are you looking at? And what are you looking at and saying that that's adequate and that's not adequate? Um, I think you kind of have to know that as well.
When, when was the last time your fences were upgraded?
To my understanding, um, la- last season, we did repair, we had, um, one of our board members that repaired some of the fencing on one field. But to my understanding, the best that I can find, this is the original fencing that was put out there.
So it was repaired, it wasn't replaced?
Correct, yes. Yes, and all three of the fence contractors that we've had come out there to give us quotes for it have said that it's, it's very difficult to replace fencing that's that old and that damaged already.
Correct.
Not that we wouldn't try, and they admitted that they, or they also agreed that they would try to fix what could be fixed.
Right.
And then the last point she brought up was, um, she'd rather have the ten million dollars that we allocate specifically for baseball to be utilized for that process and work from there.
Yeah.
Um, to me, it's not an either-or, but I also know how the growth is and the size of the organization. Can you, can you talk about that? Because I know for a fact for soccer, for example, um, quite literally, it's gotten to the point where we're utilizing our football field.
Yes.
I mean, that's what's happening from up there as well. And people are still practicing and, and wherever nook or cranny or wherever they can find a spot to go ahead and do this. For your, for your purposes, can you talk more about what would, so what would that look like for you? Even with this, um, you know, which is great to hear, you know, it's gonna open up.
Yeah.
But how would this still look for the organization?
So for the parks at eighteen forty-nine, there's three fields, two baseball, one softball. Right now, we, like we just said, we've got, um, two softball at our current location. And then we've got a T-ball field and then you have your other, um, four that are for the older age divisions. Um, to my understanding, the eighteen forty-nine is, I believe, set for eight to twelve, or fourteen U? Is that correct? Do you remember?
Yeah, we don't have any small fields out there.
So we'd have to then cancel our six U and our eight U. And our, uh, for our softball field, the same thing would happen. We'd have to cancel our six U and our eight U softball completely because we wouldn't even have enough space. Even if it was the right size, we wouldn't have enough hours to let the small kids play. So there wouldn't be allotted time. Um, right now, on any given night, we have, Monday through Friday, we have two practice slots that are open on each of our fields and they're, they're full every single night. So that gives us fourteen slots, Monday through Friday. And the eighteen forty-nine park would be three fields, um, for two practice slots. So you're cutting that over half of the amount of times that you could practice. And if I'm practicing on those fields, I cannot play on those fields because there's not enough hours. So you're either gonna play a game or a couple of games in that week, or you're gonna practice and not play games. We've reached out to Northeast Metro. They also, you know, yes, they had, they have eighteen, or they have, sorry, not eighteen. They have eight fields. Uh, they have zero softball fields. They are all baseball fields. So if we look at going to Northeast Metro, we're again cutting softball completely. That leaves our girls with no, no space, no softball to play. And I think that that's a disservice to our girls.
Tracy, why couldn't you just, um, use the field you're using right now for softball?
Be, because they're full for baseball. We, we have, all of our fields are shared. So for even right now, we've got one field, field two, which I, it's like hot commodity, right? It can host, or it can hold, um, eight U, ten U.
Twelve U baseball?
Twelve U baseball, eight U, ten U, twelve U softball. That's one field that can do eight different age divisions. Um, but you can only, you only have so much time.
So if we're, so you're saying things are limited for the first year at eighteen forty-nine?
Not necessarily, because we have seven fields right now. And we have three fields going forward at eighteen forty-nine. And our fields right now, we are sharing, like I said, multiple age divisions are sharing multiple fields. There's
Okay, thank you.
Um, at eighteen forty-nine, it also, as Shane referenced, there wouldn't be those T-ball fields. So our, our young kids would not be able to play.
So are you saying that your, your plan is to only use one space, all or nothing? Like you couldn't use the space at eighteen forty-nine park for the new fields that are being finished next year? I mean, it's next month and then continue using your current location for the, for the, the other four fields that?
Um, we could use, we could easily use the seven and the three. It, it, the, we could host the tournaments at the eighteen forty-nine. Although you're, you're limited on your age divisions there. But we also can continue to use our fields and our teams would be able to have more practice slots or more game slots. Right now, we can only host so many games during the week because we only have so much time. We could easily use both, both sets of fields.
So is it your plan to use it?
My plan would be, I would love to see us being, utilizing both fields, or both, uh, locations.
Because, I mean, that, in reality, that's what you would actually need to execute and help support the kids over here with that.
Yep.
And, and I'd say this about eighteen forty-nine, when that first opens, I mean, Shane was quite clear about the sod. I was out there when it first opened. That was a nightmare. Like, it was, I mean, and, and to be fair, I mean, it's, we, first time we opened the park and everything else organized up here, but when I'm talking about the holes and everything else that was out there? Yeah, it was
Soccer's more
Yeah. Maybe, maybe it made it sit, right?
No, it's, it's harder on the field.
And I, I do know that he referenced that there was a survey that was completed, um, I believe in two thousand and fifteen. And we just completed another survey two months ago, maybe. And still at this time, our city is still lacking softball and baseball fields.
And, and I also want to be clear, also want to make sure I'm sympathetic and understanding the other side to this. Because I think that we've all made it clear, our, um, concern with, um, our, our fellow taxing entity and how they've handled this situation. And, and I, and I understand that, I mean, this, this is something that goes back, um, actually, Councilmember Wise and I were talking about. I mean, this goes back to, I, I remember vividly seeing the agreement and the conversation well over a decade ago. And, and, you know, a gentleman's agreement for Berlakor on how they'll handle things. But the problem is, is that since everyone's playing hot potato with it, it's the kids who get hurt.
Absolutely, a hundred percent.
Right there as well. And, and that's the frustrating part with that as well. Cause, and, and we know that what we're trying, we're, we're essentially doing a capital improvement on something that, um, I think that they should be looking at.
How long, how long is the MOU? Your, um,
Memory.
Your agreement with the ISD?
Oh, uh, five years with an additional five years after that. Um, and then additionally, we meet, we continue to meet.
So when is the expiration?
That just started this year. Our first, our first, uh, year of those first five is this year.
I mean, because I have been contacted by members of public concerns that this is school district land and that school district, you know, it has, is a different taxing area than, than we are and that, uh, that was the concern raised, raised to me. So, you know, we're gonna be, um, doing capital improvements on land that's not owned by the city. Um, and then who, who has the authority to use those fields? Is it exclusive to your organization? So it's not open to the public?
Um, we, we are the, I, I'm sorry, I'm not, I don't have legal terms, but we have control of that land.
It's prob, it's probably akin to what we do at Wells Point Park with Pasel. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's probably, it's probably akin to that.
We do own the land there.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm saying, she's, you asked about control.
Yeah.
Now, what you're talking about regarding us doing essentially a capital, a capital improvement on the school district land, I have no qualms when you actually, actually crazy concept, have taxing entities work together for the benefit of the people, you know, from coming from different sides on this. My frustration is, is that, um, I'm glad that they gave you the agreement and I'm glad that you have the utilization. And I do think that this is exactly, when we talk about, you know, parks improvement, this is what we look at from, you know, PCDC, I don't see anything similar from that. But I, I just haven't heard, and maybe I, I've missed a meeting. So if I've missed a meeting with the school board and not seen it, that's my fault. But yeah, I don't, I don't see the same, um,
I, I will say on that, I, I feel like I've come multiple times asking, could we have a meeting with both sides? Can the city and the school and us sit down? And I spoke at that joint meeting at the ISD and I asked that, I had my three minutes of public comment and I said that exact thing. I said, I have been working for years to stand in a room in front of all of you and here we are. And I just asked that we can come together for the kids. Yeah, Northeast Metro looks like a great option, right? It's right there. Last year, they had four of those eight fields open. It doesn't say that on the website, it just says they have eight fields, but four of them are open. We reached out to see if we could get some, um, time to subsidize so that we can get more out of what we have. And we were instructed that we could possibly get one day. It cannot be Mondays they're closed down, it cannot be Fridays they're closed down, it cannot be Saturdays and Sundays because they host tournaments and they prioritize select teams over rec teams. So they can maybe give us Wednesday.
That sounds about right.
So I was at a PFISD Bond Oversight Committee meeting last night and they do have extra money from their bonds that is available for projects from interest. Um, you know, and they're
What do you mean, extra money?
From interest income that's earned, they, they've called it additional funds available.
Okay, you said extra money, okay.
Well
Additional funds available.
I believe that's a synonym.
Go, go ahead with your point, I'm sorry.
My point is there, there are certain bond projects, they have additional funds left after completing the, the projects that they were, um, set to complete. And they, there are, they are looking for other projects to complete with that money. So, uh, not that it's allocated to, to anything specifically, but I'm just saying that I saw that presentation last night about their capital improvements and, and what they have.
And I have been going for years to them, to ask them to be more involved with us. I don't think I'm doing a disservice by also reaching out to additional grants that we do, um, meet the requirements for. That's not to say that I won't go back to the school and I don't continue to try to work with the school. Um, I, I work tirelessly for the kids. That's what I'm here for. And at the end of the day, I don't wanna see our programs cut because we don't have the safety for the kids. Um, when I came back a couple, or when I came a couple of months ago, we talked about the lighting. That truly was a safety issue. When you cannot see, when over half of your lights are burned out and you cannot see on the fields. That's a safety issue. And I, I will continue, as, as much as I continue to come here, I continue to go to the ISD. I only have so many hours in my day as well. And I will not stop fighting for the kids. At the end of the day, I come up here for my son, I come up here for the friendships that he has made. I've come up here for the lifelong bonds that these kids have and the lifelong memories and the lessons that they will take with them. And I'm, I'm not, just because you, or just because we get a grant, that, that doesn't mean, okay, we're done. That means, okay, we continue to work and we continue to get what, what we need to continue to build on the program that we have. I mean, we're a nonprofit and we've, we, we don't take on debt. We, and again, even with this, you know, this is a reimbursement grant. We don't take on debt that we don't intend, um, that we can pay back. We don't take on things that are gonna put our youth at risk. Um, we, we all put in the hours at the end of the day for them. We don't gain anything. I mean, yes, I, I gain friendships, I I mean, yes, I, I gain friendships, I gain memories. But at the end of the day, it's the lessons that they learn. And I will continue to go to the ISD and I will continue to go to the city. And I have been told multiple times, there is nothing that we can do for you. And here I am, continuing to fight for them. Because I do not agree with that.
Tracy, I, I appreciate your passion, I appreciate your, um, steadfast advocacy, uh, for these children. Uh, and Mayor, I would ask if you would entertain a motion?
Please.
Uh, I move approval of item six A.
Second.
Have a motion and second.
Oh, I don't exist.
We all have problems.
Oh.
Let's go to the other.
Yeah, there you go. You know, roll one. Mayor pro temp? Pondering?
I am, I hope I wasn't the last one pondering. Can I, can I still say something?
Sure.
You can say something.
My biggest concern is, um, all the other groups that will come behind you who we may not be able to say yes to. That gives me pause. That's it.
I, I would love to say that our fields could be used for other things as well. If there's, you know, we have off-seasons, if there's another group that has something that can fill into those off-seasons, why can't we utilize that as well? Why can't we all work together to make one space beautiful and able to provide to many people?
That sounds like a crazy concept.
It does. Be amazed.
Don't give up. Okay. Motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Moving on to six B, discuss and consider action to approve a resolution of the City of, Council of the City of Flugerville, Texas, directing the city manager or the city manager's designate need to execute all documents to institute eminent domain proceedings for the acquisition of right-of-way and drainage easement in Flugerville, Travis County, Texas, and directing city attorney to initiate condemnation proceedings associated with the East Flugerville Parkway Colorado Sand to Weiss Lane project.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, we are here to request, uh, authorization to move forward condemnation proceedings for one parcel along the East Flugerville Parkway project from Colorado Sand to Weiss Lane. Um, so as you can see there, the yellow is where the property is. It's near, up near H E B on East Flugerville Parkway. Um, we have gone through our steps. Uh, most recently, we got an updated appraisal done in January twenty twenty-five. Uh, we did some negotiating. Our final offer was mailed in August and our, we have not been able to come to terms. And when I talk about coming to terms, we are off by approximately, um, a couple million dollars. And so at this point, it is recommended that we move forward with imminent domain to be able to close this parcel, to move forward with the project.
I'm sorry, it was, I, the glare is, I was, it's hard for me to see that. So that I was just trying.
Sorry.
So, so I can't, what part is the actual? You said that in yellow, oh, is, maybe it's easier to see here. Okay.
Mm-hmm. And the green, I don't know if you see the yellow and the green.
It's the green portion, correct, ma'am?
Mm-hmm. That's the right-of-way easement.
Yes, it's just as hard to see. How, sorry, how? How much is the acreage?
Is it clear?
It's, it's coming up next.
Do you move it from the bottom?
Move, move the wheels.
Wheels, wheels.
I'm laughing about one of six.
This is, this is Melody, can you see?
Okay, yes, thank you. Okay, so the area in the green, white, right of way.
Well, here it is. Yeah, there it is.
And so, so this is for the East Flugerville Parkway Road.
Roadway project from Colorado Sand to Weiss, yes.
Yeah, cause that's this.
And you said the difference was a couple of million.
Yes, ma'am.
Who owns the property?
Tim Timmerman.
Okay. I, I wasn't sure if this was them or the PF E twenty-three Farms LLC. It's a property in there.
He's, he's well aware.
I'm sorry, what's the total amount of acreage we're looking to condemn here?
Okay, parcel two, so fee simple, we are doing, uh, a hundred thousand, seven hundred and three square feet.
About two, two and a quarter acres.
I mean, he wants, he wants it translated.
And so what's?
Convert with that convert.
I don't know what that's, I'll, I'll have to get back to you.
You said it was, you said it was a hundred and ten thousand square feet?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's about two and a quarter acres, two and a half acres.
I'm sorry, three people are talking at once.
Two, two and a quarter to two and a half acres.
Two and a half acre?
I have talked to the property owner and we have come to the agreement that we cannot agree. And so this is our action to be able to move forward with this, to be able to close, to get the project moving.
After all we've done for him, we can't agree.
We are not able to agree at this time.
He's aware.
Did you figure it out?
Oh.
So you don't have the square footage?
I do know, I'll have to get back to you.
Well, I'm sure it's exorbitant.
So to remind me of the process. If we move forward with this, then does it, where does it go to determine the value?
So we go through the court and.
I think.
Mayor, if I may, this involves litigation.
Yeah.
If we get into legal positions or processes, negotiations, this needs to go into executive session.
Okay.
I was about to say, you, you've coughed too, I was waiting for you to say it. Mayor, we might have to go to.
Yeah, let's, let's go into executive session. We are back from executive session, no action.
Mayor, would you entertain a motion?
Please.
Motion approved. Barabla, barabla, as presented.
Six B.
Six B. Six B.
Is that an official motion?
Somebody help me, thank you, David.
All right, motion carried. Uh, our next item, and I guess you'll stay for that, right? Is, uh, six C, discuss and consider action to approve resolution of the City of Flug, City Council of the City of Flugerville, Texas, directing the city manager or the city manager's designate need to execute all documents to institute eminent domain proceedings for the acquisition of land situated or temporary construction easement and wastewater easement in Flugerville, Travis County, Texas, and directing city attorney to initiate condemnation proceedings associated with the eighteen-inch Gillon Creek wastewater interceptor project.
Oh, good evening again, so we are here to request, um, to initiate eminent domain proceedings on one parcel along the eighteen-inch Gillon Creek wastewater interceptor project. Um, the project increases the size of the existing wastewater line that is undersized, given the area it covers. Uh, the project serves a couple of large, uh, developments downtown east, Acer Equities, which is what we're here for tonight, and Bowles Park, the future destination place space. What, God bless you. What? Once, um, what you're seeing here is the map of the full project. So it's, uh, near Bowles Park it starts and it goes through along Pecan, across Des All to Paul Street. Um, again, we have been negotiating with this property owner, our initial offer was mailed in July. Uh, we've gone through some back and forth and have not been able to come to an agreement. Um, so we have to follow steps. And we have gotten to the point where we are not able to reach an agreement. And so we are now here to request that eminent domain authority.
A quick, quick question on this one. Uh, has the, the property owner been responsive? I know this is a temporary construction easement and they just, we can't come to terms.
We can't come to terms, they, they have requested a mediator and this is our way to do that.
Oh.
How much bigger is the current easement for the wastewater line versus what we now need? Was that the different shading on the map?
Brandon, come up here.
Here comes Water Man.
Ah, I won't take too long. Uh, uh, the, the existing is a twenty, I believe, and this is a thirty-foot total easement. Um, but different sized piping, you have different type of excavation of all.
Motion approved, six C is presented.
Second.
Just, are you trying to make it like Christmas with that red on top?
Okay, motion carried, thank you. Six D, discuss and consider action to approve resolution for the creation and appointments to a charter review commission.
You all have a resolution at your seat with the names of all of the appointments for everyone here for your approval.
Move to approve.
I had a, a question about the general process. Um, so it's my understanding that there's a minimum of thirteen required and a maximum of twenty that's available. Um, and new members of council will get to appoint, when, when will that happen on the?
The next meeting.
Next meeting.
The next meeting. And if there is, um, space between what has been appointed and the twenty, what is the process for addressing those available spaces?
It has to be approved by the entire council, well, it has to be approved by council.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that an automatic agenda item where we're gonna discuss it? Or is it something that just has to be requested?
There will be an, an exact repeat of this item to, um, add appointments to the charter review commission to how, whatever the council wants to do.
And is there gonna be a final decision after the runoff election?
Um, at that point, I believe that the commission will already be started.
Yeah.
Um, and so it'll depend on where we are with.
That's the only thing that's gonna be a little different this time around.
I'm just wondering, like, how, when do we decide or confirm how many additional spots that up to twenty would be available?
We don't have to fill them.
Yeah.
I mean, normally we don't, we just do the two appointments for each and then the three for the mayor.
And there's sometimes, if some fields you don't make it.
Right.
So we just, you know, we'll take care of that, too.
Well, I have heard that in the past, you know, and I have experienced that on, you know, appointed, um, committees where maybe we don't have the full participation of everyone who is being appointed in order to have full participation. You might want to appoint additional ones. I just wanted to know about that process. Thank you.
That sounds good. I don't know what a Jim McDonald is, but would you entertain a motion?
Please.
Okay. Oh, wait, we already got a motion, so I'm second, I'm second here.
Nice of you to flip it around this time, Ruth. Motion carried, thank you. All right, moving on to, uh, discuss and consider action to approve, um, a resolution allocating the City of Flugerville twenty-two votes for the Travis Central Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Yes, at the September twenty-third meeting, uh, council nominated Elizabeth Montoya and Melody Ryan to the TCAD board. Um, now it is time to allocate our votes. The city has twenty-two votes in total. Those twenty-two votes can be put to one person, put to three people, put to two people. Uh, the list of, there are five total, uh, nominations from various entities. The council can do whatever you all want with twenty-two votes.
And, and how many, how many positions are there?
Two board positions.
Two board positions, so, um, there are currently zero representatives from east of I thirty-five, is my understanding. Um, but, um, and is this really just a foregone conclusion and Austin and A I S D just gonna run the table with their two nominations? And everybody else just gets to sit?
Well, council member?
Do what they want to do.
That's why we.
That's, that's why part of our job is to allocate, I mean, I was gonna ask Melody what she wants to do.
Well, I, I would prefer.
I would prefer not to serve on this additional committee.
I move we allocate all 22 votes to Elizabeth Montoya.
Second. Now for discussion, I also move that we have conversations with our compatriots about what's happening with that because we can't, we can't get her across the line until we get.
I believe our other taxing entity is really working on that one and they have it pretty much tied down to theirs going to Mrs. Montoya, Ms. Montoya as well. As you may have noticed in the agenda item, several entities nominated Ms. Montoya, so I believe we have some momentum behind that.
Yeah.
We certainly hope so, it'd be nice to have at least one person on the board from east of I-35.
And she was nominated by the Flugerville ISD, Leander ISD, Round Rock ISD, and the city of Flugerville, no one else was nominated by four entities.
It wasn't an issue before the legislature changed how that comes about, so we'll leave it at that.
Motion carried, thank you. Item 6F, executive session, item deliberation regarding real property pursuant to section 551.072 of the Texas government code regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, and/or value of real property related to Project Listen, also has an open session item, I would also like to call six G into executive session for legal counsel on that item.
Don't we have to vote on the?
Yeah, we got the, we got one, two, three, four, five items.
Oh.
As soon as everybody gets back.
Hey Jonathan, get used to it.
Did you have a question?
Nope.
Oh Victor Davis said ask for bio.
Yeah, that's a really good idea. Well, you got four.
Five minutes.
Okay, so I have time.
Are we on break? Yeah, we're on break, all right.
We should have had a chamber of commerce meeting during Veterans Day yesterday, during Veterans Day ceremony. We talked about it, because we, when we came late, they looked at us, they're like, hey, where you all late from? I'm like, hmm, came from the Veterans Day.
Yeah, we made them make us a plate.
What do you think we're late for?
Priorities here.
Anyway, I'm sorry.
All right, our first item called for consent is 5B, approving an extension to the agreement with Wells Fargo Bank for depository services and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
One, I know we've gone through this many times before, but I want to, for the benefit of the public, have an explanation about why we aren't using a local bank or instead using a national bank that's based in California. And then the second question is, what rates are we getting, I didn't see that in there, and what provision is made for rate changes during the period of the contract?
Okay, so, so this is an extension to a contract that we have been in for several years, we did an RFP process, just like.
This is the third year, correct?
I think we're adding the fourth year, so we're doing an extension to take us through 2026.
Okay.
So we did do an RFP for depository services, I was not here when that was chosen, but Wells Fargo was chosen out of however many submitted, they do have a local branch in the city of Flugerville. We're utilizing all the extensions that are a part of the agreement, one reason is we're happy with the customer service and the services that Wells Fargo is providing, but also it's very cumbersome to change your depository and so you don't want to do it very often. So we will be going out for RFP next year because we have no more extensions left on this agreement. We, we don't have interest on our operating accounts, but we do have sweep accounts that are in place so that we can earn interest on available funds. I'm going to, I didn't look at the interest before I came in tonight, but I want to say we're at like 4.4 on most of our accounts, so it, it's pretty consistent with what we're getting in the market. What was your other question?
I think that was it.
What, what provision is there made for rate changes in the contract?
I mean, I think we are bound by market rates within the contract.
And, and how often do those, do those change? You said we have sweep accounts?
They will, yeah, they change.
Monthly, biannually?
No, they can change.
Daily.
Daily, literally.
Yeah, they can change.
Market is a daily rate.
As the market changes.
Does that help us?
Yep.
I'm sorry, Tracy, could you clarify again what you said about the sweep accounts and earning interest on certain, or we're not earning interest on certain accounts?
So we, so the accounts that were set up did not earn interest, but we created sweep accounts, so overnight that, those funds get swept and they earn interest.
Thank you.
And as I understand it, the RFP, at least the RFP in the past, does require that the bank have a local presence, a local branch within a certain distance of City Hall.
Usually they do, yes.
Because I know we used to use Comerica when it was, before it was the building and development center, when it was next door to City Hall. Yeah, I'd love to see us get some more, I know there are some other banks that have entered the market that would probably be very competitive in our, in our next RFP round.
And I've had several approach me and we've got a list of, you know, make sure that we include them if.
And they'll be happening next year, correct?
It will be.
All right.
Mayor, would you entertain a motion?
Yes, please.
Motion approved, 5B is presented.
Second.
I'm telling you, this hat's legit.
Motion carried.
Next item is 5C, approving an interlocal agreement with lower Colorado River Authority for a trunk radio system for the city supervisory control and data acquisition system and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Okay, so I saw a couple of blanks in the contract, I want to make sure that we get filled in, there are two places in the contract, come on up, I'm going to have questions too, where the word date is written in there and it's highlighted in yellow and one of them is a backward looking date, that shouldn't have ever been highlighted in yellow, it was a date that the, the contract was initially entered into, then there's the effective date of the contract, that's also blank, the city signatory is also blank, I assume that that's the city manager, is that correct?
So a couple things, so the, we were the first to execute this, so it won't be effective until LCRA countersigns it, so we don't fill out those dates until they've been countersigned, so the effective date is whenever they are signed by both parties. The, it would be whoever we delegate through this item.
But the original effective date, it says this is an extension of our previous contract executed on date, which would have been sometime in the past.
Which will be the date that we execute at this time, I think that's their standard ILA language that they do with other.
Wait, there's, but there's two dates referenced in the contract.
He's talking about prior.
Yeah, there's no prior agreement, but however, we can get that straightened up fairly quickly.
Okay, so references a prior agreement, but there is no prior agreement.
There's no prior agreement with us here.
Okay, that's a little confusing, all right. So the next question then, I was going to have, have there been any changes in the rates? Obviously not, because there's no prior contract. I also saw per unit pricing in the contract, but no total, do we have an approximate total cost for the contract?
$42 per device, so it's $42 per device for our skated devices, which transmit data all the time, depending on kind of how many devices we add on to that or remove, if we remove things like lift stations, then that reduces, that's currently being captured by our Verizon contract that we currently have, it's on a virtual local access, it's on a VLAN, that is technically connected to the internet through a private network, so we already pay for sales communication service for our remote sites, this is comparable, probably a little bit cheaper by a couple bucks, but still, and it also gets it off of the, a virtual.
What's the total cost envisioned when we execute this contract, how much are we on the hook for over the next year?
You're looking, it's in our operating fund overall, but it's, you're looking at 20 sites times $42, what is that, 420, like 840 bucks a month ballpark?
Oh.
Ball, I mean ballpark, you know, I mean, I may be off by one or two sites.
So we're, we're looking at?
Did my math check, I think that was right.
10, $11,000 for the full year.
Pretty much, for the, for the remote sites, yes sir.
Okay.
But there's a line item in our operating fund.
That's between 10 and 11.
Because that was my question too, there was a hurry in it, cost that I didn't have an idea of how many units we were, so.
And it depends, those, those can raise or increase within our operating budget depending on if I remove a site, then obviously I reduce down, if I have to add a site mid-year, then that goes up.
So the devices per locate, physical location?
Physical location, yes sir.
Okay.
So let me ask this question, since David's asked at six ways from Sunday, who, who drafted the contract?
That is LCRA standard ILA, we reviewed it, we added a little bit of language in there to.
When we say we, who's we?
We is.
Counsel.
Legal counsel, yeah, not we, we, me, I'm.
You got out your red pen.
Yeah, yeah, because what I'm, because my impression, so this is, this is my, it's to y'all, you approve, you always approve these contracts to form, so just, you know, next time, because if it's referring to something that's not in the contract.
It's not, it's not, it's not referring to something that's not, it's, there's a service addendum attached to the contract, that addendum is referencing the ILA, so we're approving the ILA and the addendum, so that date is the date that we approve the ILA, which is today.
So we're doing that at the same time?
Whenever LCRA approves it.
It's in the package. So, does that answer your question David?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion approved.
Second.
I hear a reading now.
Motion carried.
Next item is 5E, approving the creation of the Downtown East Commercial Community Inc., the Association Commercial Condominium for parcel four, the Monarch, and related supporting documents to include a master covenant, master condominium declaration, community manual, certificate of organization, management certificate for Downtown East, organizational consent, notice of applicability, condo plat and parking use agreement, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
What's the question?
Well, I pulled this because I just wanted a general overview of what the plan is, what are going to be the common areas, how are we envisioning like the costs for, for who's going to be sharing this cost and, and just a big overview.
And I have narrower questions.
Okay, okay, we'll see if we can maybe answer those questions during the presentation, so good evening Mayor and Council. Mayor and Council. We'll get this up for you. Thank you, Trista. Um, so tonight is the, the last really of the larger agreements related to Downtown East. And it's the Condominium Association, which really helps us to establish the areas where the development outside of, um, the city facilities will contribute to maintenance and contributions for the common areas, um, within the development. Um, this is, this is to help meet a lot of the, several of the project goals about the investment in the property and, and also the development and ownership, um, revenues. And so here we're talking about, um, phase one, and we'll highlight here in just a moment, but it's really focused on, um, how the red there, that's the initial retail contributes to the maintenance of the common areas, and then also establishes that foundation for the rest of the development as it comes online in phase two, whether it's parcel five, six, or seven to the north, and how they would become, um, partners in this agreement as well.
So Emily, we're talking about the initial areas. We're talking about the red areas and the rec center and the city hall, correct?
Correct, as well as the parking structure. So there's a couple of different things. Um, and we'll walk through each of those pieces. Grant, and I'm gonna mess up your last name, Prankler, is here with Winstead. Um, Winstead helped us to craft all these agreements, and he's gonna walk you through, um, each of the elements.
Did Winstead read the contract?
I'm sorry?
We'll find out. Contracts plural, bro.
Yeah, there was a lot of them.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council members. Uh, as Emily said, I'm Grant Prankler. I'm with Winstead. Uh, we represent the city, uh, in this condo deal. So I'm here today presenting for your approval the establishment of the Downtown East Condominium Community Incorporated, which is a nonprofit, uh, property owners' association, and the creation of a condominium, uh, regime for parcel four, better known as the Monarch, along with supporting documents. These foundational steps will enable successful delivery, operation, and governance of Downtown East Next Use District. So to walk you through these documents kind of one by one, simply, first we have the master covenant, which, as you see, establishes the Downtown East Condominium Community. Uh, it's a property association that governs all the parcels within the twenty-nine acre development, uh, Downtown East development site. So the develop, the master covenant sets, uh, unified standards for property use, design, maintenance, uh, and authority across all current and future owners within the Downtown East development. The certificate of formation is the foundational document that officially creates the Downtown East, uh, Commercial Condominium Commercial Community Association, defines its nonprofit status, membership eligibility, and governance structure. The organizational consent, uh, is a rec, record that authorizes essential association actions and decisions to occur without a physical meeting, fulfilling state legal format, uh, formation requirements. The community manual details the association's internal policies, procedures, bylaws, and protocols for governance and member, uh, interactions. Management certificate serves as a public notice of the association's existence and provides its official, uh, contact information. And the notice of applicability describes the portion of the property, uh, being made subject to the terms and provisions of the master covenant and any applicable development tract declaration. So next we have the, uh, the actual condominium declaration itself, which establishes a, uh, commercial condominium for lot four, and as I said, it's called the Monarch, through a master condominium declaration creating two ownership units for a, uh, a rec center and a retail unit. The first document, the master condominium declaration for lot four, is a declaration establishing the legal condominium structure for lot four, outlining owner rights, maintenance obligations, and assessment procedures for the rec center and retail units. The application for exclusive use is, as it sounds, uh, the board of the Condominium Association is giving one unit in parcel four master condominium the special right to be used for specific purposes that no other unit can use in that way unless the board or the owner agrees to change that.
Could you please explain who is going to be on the board and how is that determined?
Yeah, so the board initially is chosen by the declarant, which is the city. Um, and once that, once the board transitions over, once the declarant, uh, uh, development period's over, twenty-five years, there's a, a transition, unless, twenty-five years unless, uh, sooner decided by the city itself.
I like that, you're looking at Serena. Now, we had this conversation about, was it a year?
No.
Yeah, a year ago. That, we, we talked about that because we said, okay, well, if we're developing this, who's gonna be on this? And it's-
Yeah, it'll be the city initially.
And it's gonna be based on the property owners.
Yeah.
That's right.
The government body.
Yeah, so-
So we're gonna be the board? Okay.
Well, we're going to appoint them.
We're appointing the board.
We're appointing the board.
Which could, which could be us self appointing.
It could be.
We, we, yeah, it could, legally speaking, it could be us. Now, do we want that to happen?
Yeah, we need more meetings.
We're gonna have another volunteer, um, organization for people to apply to?
Um, yes.
I'm trying to make sure I understand. So the condo association here, uh, we keep referring to lot four, i- is that the totality of the association at this point?
That's right. So the condominium is just being established on lot four, that recreation center that you can see.
And, and the whole purpose there is because it does have a separate owned component to it for the retail.
Retail plus the rec, the rec center unit.
So, so even then, if, uh, when it comes to representation on the board of the condo association, I, the, the, the land area and the value is gonna be dramatically in the city's ownership, isn't it?
That's right.
Okay.
It's not going anywhere.
Is this the only parcel that we're contemplating having a condominium structure?
For now, I don't know. Emily might have more information on-
At this point in time, we imagine that this concept would be utilized on the remaining parcels to be, be developed. We're utilizing it here because of the retail component related to the rec center.
It'll get replicated as, as we recruit more folks to-
And would, would that be a separate condominium, or would it all come into, or would this be expanded to include other parcels?
So the, the condominium declaration is drafted to where there could be four units. Um, so it's kind of up to, uh-
Okay, that's why I wanted to clarify. Because I read that-
There's a, there's a maximum of four units.
The, the declarant would be-
A parcel's considered a unit, correct?
That's right.
And the declarant would be able to expand it as necessary.
Yeah.
Yes. I mean, we may have some more legal fees in the future to, to grow it.
That's hard to believe.
So, uh, are there any, um, clauses in this declaration that requires a, a certain level of votes to, in order to change it, that makes it very, very difficult to change? And, um-
Yes, so-
Those are other things we run into.
Now, you're pre-asking my question.
Oh, okay. I mean, I guess if-
Yes.
One entity controls the board, that's not as difficult, but if it changes.
So, yeah, what, what we have here is the exhibit B to the master covenant, which sets forth the assessment unit allocations for each contemplated, uh, potential unit. So like, for instance, the multi-family unit could have, would have, uh, point five, uh, votes per separate dwelling unit. Or like the retail or restaurant unit would have point four per thousand gross square feet of building improvement, excluding the parking structure.
And it required, I mean, ninety percent required to, to, for dissolution. Right? Um, what's required for amendment?
I would have to check the document, but-
Uh, one hundred percent. According to article, uh, the, the creation of the Downtown East Community, uh, Incorporated, the certificate of formation, uh, article four, Roman four C, requires a hundred percent agreement, uh, for any amendment. And I believe that is excessive. That effectively means there will never be any amendment. Um, so I would strongly suggest lowering that number.
Two-thirds is, is, uh, effectively no changes. When you, when you start having a lot of different owners, right? If there's a multifamily contemplated in it, that means there is no opportunity, you know, even at two-thirds would be a very, very difficult threshold to-
Well, but this, this doesn't include any residential at this point.
No, it does not.
But it contemplates it, and this, if we set this up, then that's, you know, and you can't change it, then this is, this is the time to make sure we ask all these questions. Because trying to change a declar, you know, declaration is very, very difficult.
Especially if it requires a hundred percent agreement.
Why would we set it for a hundred percent?
Think at this point it's in the city's interest, uh, that they would have a hundred percent. So everybody's on board. And there's, you know, it can't just be changed just because, you know, the, the city wants to do it. It would be the city plus the retail unit would want to do it.
Well, you know it.
But just, just to clarify, this, this would still govern if there were, other parcels would be added to it. And if those were owner, you know, with either other retail or residential, then that hundred percent would still apply, which would effectively be never can it be changed.
Is there a timeline when this needs to be approved or disapproved?
Our goal was to get this across the finish line. There's not a, specifically a timeframe, but as we've been working with Griffin Swinerton and as part of our retail MOU that was approved over a year ago now, we were trying to get this, get this wrapped up so we know-
Are you trying to say-
Focus on construction.
So if, if we postpone this for, or two weeks?
Related to the hundred percent question.
Yeah.
Or any other concerns?
There's some other questions. That's not the only one.
Because I think-
What I'm hearing is Councilman Rogers and Councilwoman Ryan and the rest of us have some serious concerns about those. And I'd give them to a chance to really go back and, and maybe work with you, Emily, to, to bring this up for the next meeting.
Yeah, let me say, I, this is a very impressive set of documents. I mean, obviously, a lot of good work has been, has gone into this. But ain't nobody perfect. The first draft is the hardest draft. I have some questions about, like I said, details in-
Does it really say a hundred percent? Or does it say only a hundred percent after transition from the declarant control? Because it looks, it looks to me like while under declarant control, you, you, I, I mean, I'm looking, yeah. Um, well, sixty-one, sixty-two. Article four. Last, second to last paragraph. Until expiration determination of the development period by the declarant, um, any proposed amendment shall be adopted. So I, I believe we have unilateral amendment authority until this is transitioned to, uh, non-declarant control. Yeah.
Yep.
Which you said is roughly twenty-five years or-
Yes.
At our option.
Or earlier, right.
Now, so my, my main concerns, because this is a, a COA or a POA?
POA.
It is a POA. So I've got some heartburn from, from other POAs. I think, uh, some folks in the, in the audience might remember those. It, the common elements that are contemplated to be, uh, maintained, uh, are there, are there any, uh, any core of engineers, any drainage, any, any creeks and flood plains that, uh, this contemplates or would contemplate in the future?
No, the, the primary maintenance areas are the civic plaza, the landscaping and improvements along Main Street, um, those would, and then the pedestrian cor, the pedestrian promenade, um, to the west of the plaza.
So the easy stuff.
Well-
Not, not the, not the, the drainage features. Those open space green belts along the creek, those remain ours.
So, so one of the things, so the, um, the unit that's being condo-ed out, does it include any external space? By that I mean, uh, I'm gonna call it sidewalk cafe space.
It does, but that's included within that boundary of the, the front area.
Included within their condo boundary.
Yes.
Is there, is there a provision in here for common maintenance of cafe, outdoor cafe space, of, of sidewalk tables, the ability for, as we grow this, this unit, that, uh, you know, those front-facing businesses can jointly maintain outdoor spaces, um, for the benefit of the individual businesses?
That's the responsibility of the retail, the retail owner.
I'm, I'm just, I contemplate in the future, this could potentially have now granted in, in additional units. Food hall concepts where we've got more joint common area, but that joint common area may be more of a leased space than a common area space.
Potentially.
You know, just want to make sure that we consider that as we develop the POA going forward.
Doug just wants their stock taken.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's contemplated in what we've got here, but that's certainly-
I don't think it is yet. And it, and it may be contemplated in a different means. It may be more considered in leased space than, than POA space.
As I'm saying, does it have to be?
It doesn't necessarily have to be POA, but I want to make sure we're thinking about it.
Yep.
Do we have, um, an idea of the expected shared costs that are going to then be, um, assessed out?
Like i- in terms of the budget, I, like the budget itself, or how it'll be?
Uh, yeah, the budget itself. Like, what is the cost that we're, that we're going to be asking everyone to share? Now, right now it's just parcel four, but what is that going to look like, you know, with future parcels?
Could you answer that in a proportionality perspective?
Yes. So the rec unit, I have it here. The rec unit, I believe, is about ninety-one point one eight or so, uh, percent of the, of the condo itself. And retail's about eight point eight one or whatever.
So, so Melody, the reason I ask for the, the proportionality on that is because as I see this, we're talking about public sidewalks, we're talking about the public plaza, we're talking about what would normally be maintained by our, our parks and streets teams. And this gives us a way to ensure that the businesses located in the area have to put into that in addition to their, their normal taxes. So we are using the, the POA to help supplement the maintenance, uh, to bring this up to hopefully a higher level, but also offset city cost.
It's common area maintenance agreement.
I'm just, I, I'm just wanting to, to get an idea of what that might be, because there's going to be future, um, businesses and/or residents that are gonna share in this. And so I just wanted to-
Sure. I, I don't know that the budget has been set.
It's not a budget, but it's proportional. We know that, we know they'll be paying eight percent of the cost.
That's right.
Right.
That's right.
Uh, and in the future, I imagine that will be diluted and others will be added.
That's right.
I agree.
Any further questions?
Uh, I, I thought Emily wanted to continue with the overview here.
We have, we have two more slides.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So with those last two slides, we have the additional documents for the condo plat, which defines the two units, um, within the Monarch between Recreation Center and the commercial retail unit. And then the parking use agreement where the parking garage will be owned by declarant the city. Um, but there will be spaces allocated for the retail unit. And the retail unit will pay, uh, their proportion of the parking spots that they're allocated.
They'll pay their proportionate?
Uh, yes.
Okay, what's that portion?
About twenty-six percent.
Cool. Yeah, about a hundred and twenty spaces for about four hundred and sixty-six spots.
All on the top floor?
The most convenient spot for retail.
Yeah. Um, will future parcels be a party to the parking use agreement, or are there other contemplated parking that have to be built with those?
We anticipate other parking, um, within, um, the property. The parking structure really supports City Hall, the rec center, the plaza, and this retail space.
Okay.
Um, so there, we contemplate that there'll be another parking structure potentially on five, and then parking, um, on the northern two parcels as well.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And last but not least, the cost structure. Um, so the association will be, will fund and manage the maintenance of the common areas, uh, within the entirety of the Downtown East project. So that's parking structure, central plaza, landscaping, um, along the interior streets. And then landowners, um, I, the, either the, uh, lot owners or the condominium unit owners, uh, will be assessed costs for administration, operation, maintenance, repair, replacements, assessments, insurance, all of the, uh, the different various, uh, aspects of common areas, uh, that can be assessed. And then, as we've talked about, with future contributions as additional- And then, as we've talked about, with future contributions, as additional owners are brought into the association, they'll contribute to those maintenance fees under the governing documents. And so the benefits here, as we see them, are it ensures equitable participation among all property owners, reduces the city's long-term maintenance burden, and promotes sustainable upkeep of the shared public spaces.
We really have a street called Pollinator Path.
Oh, I, no, no, I know, I know, I just.
And just to clarify, the roads are still going to be owned by the city and maintained, it's just the landscaping around.
That's right.
They are public streets.
They are public roadways, that's right.
Okay, so some questions about the, the master condominium declaration. In there, paragraph three point one, it says the maximum number of master units which may be created in the regime is four. Why only four? What if we have somebody else, if, if there's a desire among the, the, the people who buy or ground lease to have five large structures instead of four large structures? Why are we, why are we locking ourselves into four, six, or eight?
We had looked at the parcels that were on the property. We could amend that later, but we were looking at the parcels as shown here. The four, five, six, and seven, where we anticipate future development.
Okay.
That's currently how they're platted.
Right.
In those, in that, that lot configuration.
Okay. So you're saying there's seven right here? Now, obviously, the, the, the City Hall is not going to be part of a condo association, right?
The, the balance are city facilities.
Okay, so they won't, the idea is that they won't be part of this, this condo agreement? So it'll just be those other, those other lots?
Or.
That's the theory?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, section nine point four, obsolescence of general common elements. If the owner is holding not less than one hundred percent agree to obsolescence of common elements, again, that one hundred percent is just never going to be reached, it's got to be a lower number than that. Obsolescence of the property also sets a one hundred percent threshold, it's just too high. Nine point eight matters relating to restoration and repairs. You got a hundred percent threshold there also.
I know.
I'm sorry.
Do we need to come back and revisit that so that, I mean, because it sounds like you have a legitimate, well, you do have a legitimate concern, but how do we come to a consensus on that, at what that number should be?
I, I don't know what that number should be. I know it shouldn't be a hundred.
Well, that's what I'm asking, so that.
I would defer to the, the experts in the area.
And that's what I'm saying, I don't, I don't think we should vote on that tonight necessarily, because if you have serious concerns.
I think we're, I think we're going to, we're going to punt this at least two weeks to give them a chance to revise that, but these are specific areas.
Well, I, I would like to understand, I mean, you obviously drafted this with a hundred percent in there.
Yeah.
So, so is, is that purposeful or was that just a number that sounded good?
You didn't pull a number out of a hat. I, I, my impression is that, that you used the industry standard. Why is that utilized as the industry standard?
So I can't really speak to that, I.
That's not helpful, but keep.
Well, and it's not universal. Actually, the next one that I was going to point out was twelve point one, the revocation of the, or termination of the master declaration uses a, an eighty percent threshold and then a sixty-seven percent threshold for, it's eighty percent of the, of the votes in the condominium, but also seventy, sixty-seven percent of the registered mortgagees, so there is.
So David, so it's only, so you were going to say something, because I said that, that was helpful, so you can't speak to that, why?
There are certain aspects of this that I drafted personally and some that are just what our industry standard is.
Okay, that's, 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 that's a perfect answer, so you, you don't know why?
Yes, and I don't want to just tell you something to give you the answer.
So then this goes back, no, it's perfectly, so it goes back to Councilman, we use this question, I am tired, I'm sorry, I had to think twice about your name, Caesar, about, you know, again, that's why we're asking, Emily, can this wait two weeks? Because if it's something like that, let's, let's have a conversation.
It's good to, to understand kind of the questions, so that we're able to clearly address those.
So on the, the ones related to sixty-seven percent related to residential, is that what you were saying?
No, no, that's.
But mortgagees, so that could be potential multi, like, family owners? Is that like an FHA requirement?
It'd be, it'd be single-family owners.
Well, it could be mortgagees of any, any building that's, that's, that's built in the area, the, the mortgagee.
Could be a mortgagee in that, in that retail space?
I'm sorry. I overtalked you, Doug, go ahead.
Could be a mortgagee in the retail space?
I, I believe that's correct, and in, in fact, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent, but it looked to me like the city could mortgage part of it, and then it would have a mortgagee who would have to be, who would have to approve some of these things. Am I, am I reading that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So it could be our mortgagee, our, our bank, or it could be the retailers or multifamily. So there are a lot of potential mortgagees who could get involved in something like this.
Right, it does, it does sound like I'd prefer some clarification and/or amendments.
So, we don't, we don't have to get direction for that, we just say bring it back in two weeks.
Yeah.
With clarification on the percentage.
Were there other concerns you had?
Um, one other concern I had was that the, the insurance minimums seemed a little low. The attachment five refers to insurance requirements of only a million dollars per incident and two million dollars total. That, that seems like that might, might leave us a little bit more exposed than we want.
A million dollars per incident, do you think it's low?
A million dollars per incident, oh yeah, I, I mean, as, as you say, Rudy, I know a lot of plaintiff's lawyers who.
Well, you know, you know I do insurance defense. I don't think, I mean, per incident?
Yeah, I was going to say that's, again.
But that's, that, that number was a standard number twenty years ago, when the dollar was worth more than it is now.
I'm telling you, that's a standard number in two thousand twenty-five.
I think it's a little low.
I would, I would assume that since this is also largely public property, that there's other remedies other than insurance.
Well, but here's the, here's the problem. To the extent that we are not executing a core governmental function, and the rec center is not a core governmental function, we no longer have governmental immunity if somebody slips and falls and breaks their head inside the rec center. Now, if they slip and fall and break their head, their head inside City Hall, we can plead governmental immunity all day long, but rec center?
I mean, I, I'm, I'm assuming we'd have something under our risk pool.
Yeah, and, and we'll just start hosting our city.
For the non-governmental functions.
No, no, we just have our city council meetings in the rec center, so we'll change what we. Okay, yeah, just bring, you heard the questions?
Okay.
Cool.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Hold on, hold on, I'm not finished.
You said you had one more.
He did say one more, he said one more.
I said one more on that, on the master condominium declaration. On the community manual. Uh, three point one D has a remaining red line. I don't know what you want to do with that, but that, that, you want to take that out?
This is one I, many questions, this is the time, these are the type of questions you get sometimes.
And then the last, the last question is not necessarily something you need to change, I'm just curious. Uh, in the organizational consent, specifically says we, we're not going to have a corporate seal. Why?
Again, just standard part of our documents.
Okay, all right. No further questions. Thank you, Bourbon.
All right.
No further questions for the witness.
And if you can, if you can provide the answers in, what's that form that we call? Friday, yeah, we Friday fun hour, I'm tired, man.
Fun hour, fun hour.
Yeah. Okay. S, or five F?
The next item is five F. Approving a professional services supplemental agreement with STV Inc. in the amount of three hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars to provide WIFIA funding support services and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Okay, this is just a high-level question, why?
We're spending a lot of money on WIFIA, we've spent a lot of money on legal fees for WIFIA so far, it's a very expensive program, just a high level, why are we, why are we, are we spending another three hundred fifty-six thousand dollars on WIFIA supervision?
The WIFIA program, excuse me, Jeff Dunsworth, utility, what am I, I'm sorry, I'm late, it's late, Assistant Director. The WIFIA program comes in three tranches. We completed the master agreement, we have closed on tranche one, we have yet to close on tranche two, and we have a future tranche three and three point five possible. There are still reports, services, items that we have to address in the tranche one. There is tranche two, there's American Iron and Steel, Davis Bacon, numerous items that we have to comply with throughout the duration of construction until we close out in tranche two. And then once again, we have to, all these over again in tranche three. Uh, STV has been a valued partner. They provide great resources. This is a, in the terms of utilities, this is a short duration, you know, four to five years, we'll have everything wrapped up with our WIFIA program all over construction. We're, knock on wood, hopeful that it'll all occur. The, as far as outsourcing these services, they have a vast group of professionals, both on the finance side, engineering, funding, they have a contact directly with EPA Environmental. There are a lot of environmental constraints that have to be performed in order for us to secure the funds. For us to hire these people, there, you said, I guess, Councilman Weyshu is saying engineers a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty dollar, a hundred and twenty thousand a year, some of these are professional services well beyond that frame in the environmental sciences. It would be difficult to, for us to hire someone of that caliber, that many people to get us through the duration of this loan, this WIFIA program, for such a short duration, four to five years. It would be, it'd probably take us three years just to hire all the people on that we would need. And for us to finance them through that period was not economically feasible. It's best to outsource and utilize the resources of someone else. Some of these, the loan programs, some of it's sporadic, it ramps up, you may have five people working, you know, sixty hours for three or four weeks, and then there may be minimal activity for a month or two until we have, have responses coming back from EPA, TWDB, some of the other entities. They've been a great resource for us, also help out Tracy in finance with a lot of the reporting, a lot of the funding requirements. They've got their, their finger on the pulse of what's happening with TWDB, which is good, they have a good recourse with TWDB, some of them are previous TWDB employees, so they have a good rapport with the staff there. We've been pleased with their services, they're a great asset for us to get through the WIFIA program. We need the WIFIA program to complete our CIP projects. And with the conjunction of WIFIA and TWDB, we can make a lot of things happen in a short duration.
And will this get us all the way through tranche three point five, or are we going to have to come back?
At least through tranche, tranche two, I believe the duration of this contract is twelve months. It's a time and material contract, we can press for a continuation at that on, on the remaining funds. But STV is very, they've been a, a good steward of the funds, they haven't, in my opinion, they have not abused the funds, they've monitored them. We've pulled as much as we can through the tranche one funds, and now we need additional funds to make it through tranche two and then initiate the tranche three.
So you think this will get us to the beginning of tranche three, but not all the way through tranche three?
Is that about the case, Jessica? Sorry, this is.
That's what's in the fee schedule.
Yeah, Jessica Taylor with STV. This agreement includes applying for and going through the environmental and engineering review process to close tranche three.
Okay, so that gets us all the way through the end of tranche three, or just the environmental review process of tranche three?
Going through the closing of tranche three, there could, in the future, this agreement includes loan management for the compliance of the requirements Jeff mentioned, like AIS, Davis Bacon, throughout the implementation of the project. So that could be a future, like, those services would still be needed for tranche three.
So I'm, I'm hearing you say you're going to be back for some more money on, for these guys next year, but it'll probably be a smaller number? Is that, am I hearing that right?
I believe so.
Okay.
We'll be looking at closing out most of the projects in tranche one, will be closed out by that time, we'll be ramping up the tranche two. The tranche three is going to have, there's more projects in tranche three, but they're smaller, smaller in dollar value. But it's, it's tough to say at this time, we just hope we can get our federal government back working so we can close on tranche two.
All right, that sounds good.
Just to clarify, you said if we, if there are delays and we're not able to finish everything in one year, we can still continue to finish the services, but it may be, it may take longer than the twelve months in the term?
Correct.
So this is a, this is a time and materials with a not to exceed, so we're charged for the, the actual time.
Correct.
And so if it doesn't close, in theory, we wouldn't burn all these hours, so we'd be coming back for an amendment for more time, not necessarily for more money.
Yes.
Which is key.
And yeah, it looks like, it looks like it gets us, I'm doing back in the napkin math here, maybe another fifty thousand to, to clear out tranche three based on how much we've got in here for tranche two and how much we've got for tranche three in the fee schedule.
That, that seems optimistic to me, I think.
We've got about a hundred, about a hundred and sixty of this is for tranche two, the rest is tranche one closed out, and then we've got a hundred and ten in here for tranche three right now.
But we've also got three point five.
Good point.
I think we're probably looking at six figures, but less, less than half of what we, what we're approving tonight, I think. All right, thank you very much. Mr. Dunsworth, always a pleasure.
Thank you, please.
Second. Yeah, there's one more.
I told my wife age fifteen.
Motion carried.
The last item is five G, approving a professional services supplemental agreement with Cape Dawson Consulting Engineers LLC in the amount of two hundred eighty-one thousand six hundred thirty-one dollars for the New Sweden Lift Station and Course Main Project and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
New Sweden?
New Sweden, isn't that near Denver?
I, I did, I, I would like to see a presentation of the map of where this is going to be, who it's going to be serving, why are we doing it now?
You understand, Mr. Pritchett.
And could you talk about water all night long, please?
I didn't realize we wanted to stay till Thursday.
Can we take the three-minute timer going?
I thought y'all wanted to stay till Thursday morning, so that's why I thought we're doing tonight. But if y'all, just cut me off. So, so yes, just a little bit about the project, so the New Sweden area, if you're not aware, it's on nine seventy-three and the nine seventy corridor, right off of New Sweden Church Road. A little bit about the project. So this is a wastewater lift station, it's more strategic, being a little more strategic with how we're doing lift stations, so there's two in our CIP. The one that you see that's, that we're talking about this evening, which is the New Sweden Lift Station, and then you have the Codmont West Lift Station, that's already under construction. So this, this area has a very long history, so there are three municipal utility districts that are out in the New Sweden area, there's New Sweden, but one, two, and three. So they have development agreements with the city that go all the way back to about two thousand and eight for us to serve wastewater to them, whether it's a treatment plant or wholesale wastewater through a lift station. So the most recent iteration of their development agreement, agreements was wholesale wastewater service, the way we didn't have to build a third wastewater treatment plant on that site. So this is to.
The agreement.
The agreement, that was the agreement we we had. And so this is to serve the three muds, there's about, I believe, four thousand or forty-five hundred L U Es, I'd have to look at the, each of their individual development agreements to confirm that. But it's to serve those three muds that are all in different stages of their development permitting process. I think the most recent one was new Sweden.
Branded any of those muds, help contribute financially one way or the other to getting this done?
They'd pay impact fees for it, and they're in the, they're the high, what I would consider the high impact fee area, so the the highest impact fees that we have, which is the Cottonwood Wastewater Service Shed.
Which we set up at the old city council, boys?
No, no.
The last, the last impact fee study? Twenty twenty-three, I believe. I believe, I'd have to look, it's, I think it's about two or three years old. But these, but they, to answer your question, they would repay impact fees just like any other development. And then they still have to get to us, so they have to get easements and through our city property to do that. But this, this contract itself, though, is to do the project management bidding for the lift station itself, as well as to get to award and construction phase services for construction administration. So this, we have a, we have a shot clock, so to speak, for this development agreement, but we're, we own the property, so we've got a pretty decent window to get this.
Brandon, for years, we had been asked, because we had made an agreement about putting a, a treatment plant out there. We believe that from a financial and fiscal stewardship standpoint, it did not make sense to be able to do that. The ultimate, for better lack of term, mediated agreement here was to actually put in this lift station. And so this lift station will be state of the art for better lack of term with the lift station, but it's still a lift station, which means that it has an expiration period, but given the timeframe from when we believe that we can bridge, you know, what we need necessary from now to the future when it might actually have its end of life period and we're ready to go ahead and have a wastewater treatment plant out there, this should be able to help utilize, facilitate that and help service those muds out there that we're, have a contract to deal with.
Correct, and I mean, I'll, I'll keep y'all here on, I'll talk about.
I was under the impression that this lift station pushing flows to Willbarger would, that Willbarger was designed for the ultimate capacity for both basins.
This, this construction is not for the entire capacity of the, the new, new Sweden.
Of the, of the Cottonwood Basin?
Cottonwood Basin, yeah, because you've got Cottonwood West, Cottonwood East. And so this, if we wanted to expand this, I, I mean, it's hard for us to say, are we going to build a wastewater plant or expand the lift station, right? There's a lot of factors that can change between now and when I'm.
We've got enough footprint at Willbarger to.
To handle the flow, correct. And so, but it also depends on, again, there's a lot of things that can change out east in the future. We're keeping that permit active for a wastewater plant, you know, keep renewing that just in case those, those change.
Which is key because of how long the process gets, to get permit for that.
State's fine, T C Q's super fun. But, but I think, customer watched your point, I think we are planning for lift stations right now, kind of looking at how that development's occurring, but I couldn't tell you what's going to happen fifteen years from now, if anything changes out there with density development that make a wastewater plant make more sense than a larger lift station. So really, right now, we're looking at maybe permanent lift station, maybe what's considered double barreling the wet wells and have two side by side, which is a little bit more operationally robust than just having one single feeder point. But it, you know, fifteen years from now, twenty years from now, it's kind of a, you kind of have to be flexible on that.
You're, you're deep enough in the weeds.
Yeah.
I can keep.
No, no.
I appreciate it, but yeah.
What is the?
Three minute buzzers over.
What's the expected life of this lift, lift station?
So we're pretty strategic on how, I can hear everybody going, stop talking.
How many years?
You're looking, the way we're doing the wet well could be twenty, twenty-five years, we're trying to, twenty-five.
And do we have an engineer's estimate of probable cost for the construction?
It, I, I know Paco with Pave Dawson's here, he might be able to remember, but we do, and it's in our most recent.
It's already in the C I P.
Yes, sir.
And you will get a firsthand knowledge of lift station on Monday, because you're taking it out to go clean out a lift station and then realize why the preference is never, ever to do a lift station.
They're fine.
Here we are.
All right, so I'm gonna, on this last item, move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second.
Wait, what? His last time. Last time.
City council place one.
Yeah, come on. Don't speak nonsense to me. Who, who's?
Mr. Rogers.
Who we waiting for?
Oh, David.
Did he close his computer out?
We did.
Okay, motion carried.
All right.
We done? adjourned.
Oh, you gotta turn in your badge and.